Like a good steakhead. But, um, in my opinion.
You gotta hear.
But this, when I think of anything that...
They think that that clock is about a minute slow, Mr. Terry Williams.
A lot of drinking and partying and getting drunk all our day long.
Oh, really? You don't think of them as...
What say, what say you, City Council?
No, the places I've been normally entertainment districts where the Chico Chico bars are, you know.
Courtney Dunn.
Watch out.
We have work to do, sweetie. Let's get off the phone.
Yeah, kinda like Bourbon Street.
I'd like to call the Moll Mill City Council meeting to order. I have not heard from Councilmember Anderson that I'm aware of. He may have told me something, but I don't remember. So it may be on me that, uh, uh, that he's not here. So, but I don't remember that. Also, I need to let you know that City Clerk Timmons is out of town at the International Institute of Municipal Clerks meeting, and Deputy City Clerk Amanda Schmidt will be in her seat tonight and read the ordinances and resolutions and everything for us. So, uh, the call to order made. We'll move on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilmember Vapurzen to lead us in that tonight.
Father, we love you. Thank you for this day, for the opportunities that you provide for us. Sometimes we see obstacles and don't realize the opportunities that lie on the other side of them. And sometimes the obstacle is the opportunity. And if we just see things from your perspective. Give us wisdom tonight as we have decisions to make. Lord, our thoughts and prayers are with those in Texas, trying to make sense of what happened there in the school shooting. And God, I pray that you would bless and comfort. And, um, there's some real difficult questions that need to be answered. And there's some families that are hurting. And I just ask that you'd comfort them in a very special way. For this gentleman just found in Little Rock that was missing, for the situation there, for his family and friends also. Thank you for your protection daily upon us. I don't think we realize every day how often we have close calls. But we're thankful for bringing us together this evening. Bless our military men, women that are abroad, that are here, our uniformed personnel for their safety as they protect us. Again, bless us this evening. We are most grateful for your love for us and for Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is special guests and announcements, and we don't have any of those tonight. Next item is approval of the minutes from the May 7th regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Move to accept.
We have a motion and a second to accept. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards on agenda items or non-agenda items tonight. Move on to the next item, which is a financial statement review. And Ms. Vega is here tonight to present that.
Good evening. Okay, so, uh, go to the next slide, please. Um, this slide is of our fund balance, and, um, the sanitation fund is up seven percent over budget. The street fund is up three percent over budget, and the general fund is up one percent over budget. The next slide, this is of our general fund, um, revenue sources. Um, city taxes are up two hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars over prior year. Um, franchise fees are up seventy-eight thousand over prior year, and, uh, county sales are flat to prior year. Um, on the street fund, the, uh, street aid is up eight thousand dollars. County millage tax is up forty-eight thousand dollars, and the turnback, state turnback is down twenty-three thousand dollars to prior year. The sanitation fund is, um, flat to, it's ten thousand dollars difference up. Okay, now we're at the general fund expenses. Um, as you can see, fire and police, um, are up over prior years, and this is due to, um, police and fire increase to, uh, uniformed personnel pay and the corresponding law fee expense. And the new senior center, um, it's, it's, um... It's up over prior year, and that's due to the center not, the new center not being open in first quarter in a bigger facility. And then this slide shows, um, the spending by category. Um, police and fire are our greatest expenditures, and they're more than half of our, um, general fund expenses. The street, uh, fund expenditures, all right, um, and under other operating, the, um... That, the, there's a big difference between prior year and current year, and this variance is due to, in 2016 or 2017, um, there was a third entrance, um, expense, Michael Baker, that we were waiting on reimbursement for, and that had not come in. That's why that number's so high. And that, that was seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars that we were waiting on, um, and we did receive. And then the other, um, variance is, um, that the fuel allocations were not booked, and again, they, those were corrected in prior, I mean, in future months. Sanitation expenses, um, other operating expenses are up because tipping fees increased seven thousand dollars over prior year. And, um, 2017 is down because, again, fuel allocations were not booked in prior year. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Scott?
Have we found out anything about the department store revenue? The stuff that we're getting that we don't know?
They won't, they won't talk to us about it.
Oh.
You can't get any information about it.
But it's still there?
Still there. They haven't, they haven't, they haven't recovered it, uh, or haven't rebated it back, but we, uh, we won't get our, uh, sales tax report until about the 25th of this month. So it's not showing up necessarily. You're, you're, you're at the end of April on this one. So, but the sales tax usually comes in about the 25th.
Okay. Just curious.
Mm-hmm.
But you cannot ask DFNA a question about where that money comes from. You know, they just don't allow.
And that's our city's health tax.
Yep. Councilmember Vapurzen?
As to the same question, follow-up, is there a statute of limitations for when they can come and pull it back out? I mean, could they come back in two years and go, uh, we made an error? Are you aware?
There is, there is, there is a limit. Uh, it was three years. I think it's been reduced, uh, I think it's been reduced to two years, but it's, yeah, it's somewhere, at one point in time, they could go back three years and get it. Yep.
Second question I have is with the revision that we're talking about tonight, the budget revision for the health insurance through the league, somewhere close to, uh, fifty thousand dollars in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Now, everything is up except for a turnback. So you think we'll be well-covered this year, uh, for that fifty thousand? I mean...
Um, don't we have an, uh, resolution for that?
We do.
We do, yeah.
We do, but I just, is there any concern of yours at all for that?
That it's gonna be higher?
I mean, well, it's, we don't know if it's gonna go up next year, do we?
Oh, we, yeah, we won't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't know what it's gonna do. They do, they, they change in January and July.
Was it based upon the loss that they suffered because of the...
It was ba, it was based upon the claims paid versus premiums...
Okay.
...that we paid. So, yes. That's, that's, and, uh, we have not had an increase since 2013 on our health program. And that is almost unheard of if you look at anybody else in corporate world or whatever. Uh, and I would say even the 10% that they went up is probably lower than most corporate insurances have gone up. But with, the reason, we're in a self-insured pool, but at the same time, we've got to be able to carry our own weight in that. So that's what they look at, and based on our losses, they could've bumped us up two classes, but they only bumped us up one. Uh, because the losses were about, uh, and I had that for later, uh, well, it's two hundred and thirty-something thousand, I think, but that's before they do the incurred but unpaid claims, and then it's over almost four hundred thousand dollars when you add that in there. Because historically, medical bills come in late to the insurance company, and so they've estimated an under a hundred and, I forget now the number, a hundred and fifty or a hundred and something thousand in addition to that, so... But if, if you look, I mean, overall, the, uh, the, the general fund balance is up about, what, a hundred thousand over what we estimated also currently, if I'm looking at that right. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep. So in this, 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 that's in the general fund. This is be about forty-one thousand in, uh, forty-two thousand in general fund, thirty-six hundred, thirty-seven hundred in street funds, and forty-two hundred in sanitation. So it's going, it coming out of all departments that health insurance increase will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to accept the financials for April?
Second.
Who, who said so? Move. Okay, all right. Trying to help Ms. Schmidt out over here.
Who seconded?
It was Councilmember Saunders. Okay, we have a motion to accept, uh, in a second. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Okay, we had a motion by, uh, Councilmember Timmons and a second, I think, by Councilmember Vapurzen. He beat you to it. I'm sorry.
I'm a little hard to hear.
You know, we're practicing for Family Feud, so we're hitting that button in a hurry.
We have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the second reading ordinance number nine fifty-four, adopting a master street plan map. Deputy City Clerk Schmidt, will you read that by title only, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Moll Mill, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine fifty-four, an ordinance adopting the master street plan map and description for the City of Moll Mill, Arkansas.
Okay, thank you. There any discussions on ordinance number nine fifty-four? Mr. Neri is in the audience that can answer any questions, if you have any. Councilmember Vapurzen?
I know at times when, whether it's, uh, street plan or whether it's a population increase, sometimes our wards are reevaluated. How often is that done?
It's done after the dicentennial, or decennial, decennial, I believe, census.
Okay.
So that will be done after the 2020 census.
Okay.
And the, the reason you're doing that, you're trying to keep the wards in the same population. And so we did one, I guess the last time would've been in 2011 or '12 is the last time those were redrawn, and they may or may not change. I mean, it depends on how much population, and what they did in the last one is, Metroplan did that for us, and they tried to keep the areas that were growing the lower numbers, 'cause you have to be within a certain percentage. I don't know what that is. I don't know if it's 10% when you make those districts. So they put the areas that were growing less than the other areas that really couldn't grow anymore. So like for...
Anticipate.
Yes, anticipating. So like, for instance, most of, uh, Ward Three cannot grow just because that area is totally developed. And so I know Ward One, they left some area, uh, some population gain in, and it'll probably be in Ward Two also, because that was the areas where subdivisions were still being built and all that, in those two areas. So that's what I, that's what I remember from almost 10 years ago.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other questions on ordinance number nine fifty-four? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business, which is resolution number 2018-12, amending the 2018 general fund budget. Ms. Schmidt, if you'd read that by title only, please.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Moll Mill, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, resolution number 2018-12, a resolution amending the 2018 general fund, street fund, and sanitation fund budgets and for other purposes.
Okay, um, this is what we were talking about earlier, and I included the letter from the Municipal Health Benefit Fund that you should have a copy of, and it talks about how our medical rate class will be a Class Four effective July 1, 2018. And as I stated earlier, these, they look at these twice a year, so we could, if, if the trend doesn't change, we could see another increase in, uh, January. I don't expect that because, uh, the claims that we incurred were from a one-time, uh, incident that, uh, uh, was a pretty substantial claim. And so, uh, if you look at the next page that was included, it basically gives you the experience report, and premiums that were paid were five hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents. Client, and this is from October 1, 2017 through March 31st, 2018. And, uh, the claims paid were seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-two, which was about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in excess of the premiums that were paid. And then the, you see the administrative and excess coverage cost expense of fifteen thousand four hundred, and then incurred but unreported claims was one twenty-eight, which resulted in an estimated total loss of nine hundred and twelve thousand and sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents, which is right at a three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar, uh, four hundred and seven, four hundred and ninety-three dollars that has been paid out or expected to be paid out more than premiums, or a loss ratio of one seventy-seven point five-nine. Uh, but it's not a, uh, it's not something that I think will continue at the rate that it was going at. Now, I think most of the claims on the big claims should've been in by March 31st. There's some ongoing things that are related to that, but not anywhere near. It was, it was basically a hospital stay that went over 60 days is what that was, uh, with an individual. And, uh, so, uh, that's a, that's a large part of that, and it, it was during this period. They also won't tell me what it's related to because of HIPAA laws, but, uh, uh, I, I think I know what it was, so... And then you have just a copy on the, the color copy is just the rates, uh, and so we moved from a Class Three to a Class Four. So I'd have, be happy to answer any questions on this resolution. Uh, and as you can see, there's a breakdown for each department on the actual resolution so that you can see the amount that affects each department. And basically what that is related to is basically number of employees in each department. So you can see the smaller departments are impacted less than the, uh, the larger departments.
Motion to approve resolution number 2018-12?
Second.
I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-12 in a second. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, first question is, is this, is this in final form? There's usually a, uh, an account like, uh, funds reserves or something like that that's...
This is in final form, uh, so you're right. There's normally, uh, how much is taken out, but, uh, well, we'd have to do it by hand, but we're taking out forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seven cents out of the general fund, four one eight five seven point zero seven out of the general fund. And the numbers that we would've had would've been Ms. Vega's latest numbers out of the general fund that were just given. So you could look at that report, and that's where that would, basically that number would go down from the...
Right, be the, be the reserve.
Be the reserve number that's there, less that number is what we would actually have. So five, five million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred dollars would be the number that's listed there. And then in street fund, it was three, three thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents, and in sanitation, it's four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Those should be reported on page two, uh, exactly in those numbers that I just gave you. So, but the last two, the street health insurance and the sanitation, those are separate departments, separate budgets.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one other question, uh, you know, I guess it's possible with the, the way we budgeted, we could do, you could do a budget transfer within departments, uh, to, uh, adjust for that if there's room in some other accounts or something like that. Uh, now, there, you know, I think we said it can be done by, it's gotta be by fund, by personnel, and by operating and capital expenditures. And so is, was there room to perhaps just do that without having to do the...
No.
Try to stick with the budget?
No, because it was, the, the personnel is the one that you have the least movement on.
It would be the personnel.
It would be the personnel portion is where that's at, and that's the one that's the least that, if, if it would've been coming out of the, uh, just operating, we might, could've looked at that and waited till later in the year and seen if we were gonna have overage, but we couldn't make a budget transfer interdepartmental from operating to personnel based on the, the, the way we just passed the, the most recent budget, so...
Okay, all right. Just wanted to know if that was considered, yeah, I couldn't tell if it was gonna be operating or personnel.
No, it's, uh, it's personnel. It, it's, it's a personnel benefit, and so those all fall in the upper part along with salaries and, uh, retirement and that sort of thing.
All right, those things are pretty much hardcoded. All right, thank you, thank you for that.
Okay. And, and I think we, and now, uh, the one of the reasons we didn't list that one is there would've been three separate line items there for the general fund, the street fund, and sanitation, and we were kinda doing this one as we, we were kinda winging it, 'cause we've never done one that touched all three budgets at the same time, uh, to the best of my knowledge in the, the 11 years of doing this. So that was kinda, we were looking at, how do we do this one, you know, and so we talked about it. So I think that's what we decided on. The best way was just show each line item as it was, so...
Okay.
Any other questions on resolution number 2018-12? If not, all those in favor, uh, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, uh, next items are mayor's comments. Uh, just want to remind you all of the Memorial Day event that is May the 28th, uh, at 10:00 a.m. That's at the Veterans Memorial at Lake Willistee Park, so please come out for that and support that event. Rain or shine, we're gonna be there. Uh, so bring an umbrella if it looks like it's gonna rain, or you might wanna bring one if it looks like sun's gonna shine. It might be a little warm out there. So, uh, uh, but please come out. We'll have the field of flags that will, should be there on Friday around noon, and then they will stay until after the event, and then they'll go down around noon. Uh, so if you can't come to the event, at least go walk through the field of flags. Uh, Lions Club fish fry event, uh, it's my understanding, and Mr. City Attorney can correct me, they served about 350 meals that Saturday there. Uh, they felt really good about the, the Lions felt really good about the event, and they had a lot of prizes given out, and, uh, a lot of people just stayed and stuck around 'cause they were giving out prizes. So I think they stayed for a long time after they showed up. Uh, but it was a good event, and, uh, you missed a chance to meet some politicians if you didn't go to...
Fish was very good, by the way.
And then, uh, some good news, we will be having the 2016 audit presented at the next council meeting. So Mr. Kraft will be here. Uh, he, he was out of state tonight, or we were gonna rush to try to get it done, even though we don't have the documents printed, we were gonna do something, but they're gonna have those published, and, uh, then he will be presenting that. And if we can get those published soon, we'll probably just deliver them to your house so that you'll have a chance to look at them prior to that council meeting. It's what the plan is right now. Did you have a question on that, Councilmember Scott, or...
Yes, I was, I was wondering if that evening we were going to forego the department reports.
We are, and, uh, I, I meant to say that. It's written down on my agenda that, uh, yeah, we're, we're gonna forego those because the audit's gonna be presented, yes. And Councilmember Mosley?
He had, he had talked about it when we had him in for our Oversight Committee. He had talked about issuing a management letter. He said there would be some items in a, uh, management letter, and, uh, he talked about issuing that before the audit, but we haven't seen it or anything. Is he, do you know if he was gonna issue that at the same time?
Well, I, I'm, I'm sure he's gonna issue it at the same time. I'll just have to ask him about that. Uh, but I think that they were concentrated so hard on getting the audit out, that's what we were trying to do, was get it out, and it got done Wednesday night or whatever, or Thursday, maybe on Thursday, actually. It was Thursday, uh, that their portion got approved and all that. And, uh, so, uh, uh, 'cause they prepare it, they give it back to us, we write a report, prepare that, and give it back to them, and then they have to look over it and approve it. And so that's what took place Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
Okay.
And so, uh, 'cause I signed our letter on Friday morning early is what I did, so, yeah, and so now we're trying to get that published.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Williams?
I think he had mentioned in that meeting that his management letter, he was gonna see if it was, um, where did Ms. Vega go? She's not, was appropriate to do prior to submitting the audit in its final form? And I think maybe he didn't, they just decided not to do that, to give it all at the same time.
Yeah, I remember it was kinda, we said it's up to you. I haven't wanted to do it.
Right, right. I think he was gonna see if it was appropriate.
And, and we also talked about trying to do a condensed version because the, the CAFRA that we do, we do to submit for an award, well, we, we'd missed the deadline for the award. We knew that. So there was talk about paring it down, but it really was to a point that when we started talking about that, that we might as well do our normal standard audit, and we continued on with that, because it was gonna change the way things looked and, and the way everything was gonna have to be written up, and so we left it as it was. Uh, and that was based on a decision between Ms. Vega, Mr. Kraft, and myself, that, yeah, let's just keep doing it the way we've been doing it, and that way it's, it's in the same format that everybody's used to seeing it. Planning Commission report is the next item, and that will be at the, after the, that will be at the next meeting, 'cause the Planning Commission meeting is this Thursday night. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Vapurzen?
Uh, Dragon Boat Races, June 15th, 16th, uh, here, just wanted to make mention of that. That is a huge, huge event in Moll Mill now.
Say the date again.
Fifteenth and 16th of June, the Dragon Boat Races here at Lake Willistee, and there are hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of people that are, that attend that, so... And it is a lot of fun to watch.
I think they've adopted Moll Mill as a permanent home for that, too.
I would, yes.
Well...
Like three years ago or four?
Well, as permanent as permanent can be, yes. I mean, they moved it from a different location that they had been having it at, and, uh, it's been here ever since, so, yeah. It's, it's back to the definition, what's permanent, what's temporary, that we get into sometimes, you know? So something temporary sometimes lasts a long time, you know? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I want to point out, I, I get the Sunday paper. I don't know how many people actually read the paper anymore, but they were talking about a splash pad that's coming in for Conway. Uh, Mayor knew about it, and I, for those of you all that's been involved in all that probably do too, but they're apparently gonna have one that's, uh, gonna be finished, uh, ready to open July 4th. Uh, they were just really starting groundbreaking in May. It's gonna be three hundred and, uh, cost is three hundred and thirty thousand, fifty-fifty matching grant from the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism. It will be, uh, free, free to the public. There's no cost involved, apparently. Uh, should accommodate 500 kids at a time. It seems like a lot of kids. Uh, and they apparently have three, uh, different areas for, for, based on skill level and handicap level and that sort of thing. Anyway, it's very interesting. Uh, I guess that's about it. But anyway, I thought I'd point that out in case somebody hadn't seen it. I've got the article if somebody wants it. Also wanted to, uh, mention that, uh, I was driving down the Boulevard last night, and that area behind Riverland with, uh, the fencing and everything, that looks really cool with, uh, all the trees right behind it and everything. It just really makes a nice backdrop. That fencing was a nice touch when you did that. So, kudos for that.
Well, I appreciate that. Well, I appreciate that very much. It was a requirement, so, uh, I can't take, I can't take a lot of credit for it. There's a wall back there, and so...
I'm actually surprised nobody's run into that one right there by the, the road, but...
Well, they have hit it, but they've not destroyed it. We've, we had to rebend it back in shape, and actually, a car a few weeks, well, a few months back now, actually ran off the, the wall back there and took out three sections of it, and they've already been replaced, so. We had orange, uh, safety fencing up there for
I remember seeing.
A month or so while the fence was being rebuilt. But someone came through the median, they go in the opposite direction and wound up
Good grief.
Out in that area right there, so, yeah. So, but I wish I could take credit for the looks of it, but it's, uh, it was a requirement, because there's a wall there, so.
Okay, had a couple more items, if that's all right here. Uh, impact fees, we talked about that briefly the other night. And the mayor and I had a conversation in the last two weeks, and, and I will probably eventually make a motion, reform a committee to look into that. Generally, when you make a motion to do that, you almost have to be prepared to chair such a committee.
Yes, you do.
And I've got a committee going now, and I kinda told the mayor, I said, I'm having trouble even keeping that thing going as fast as I need to, so. But he and I talked a little bit about, uh, we kinda zeroed in on what we would, what we thought might be appropriate. And we were talking about just the area on that side of the Boulevard, uh, that new growth area, and perhaps, uh, making any funds raised go toward fire stations and roads. And we, we knew it wouldn't, it's not gonna cover all that, but it would just, it would be something to look at as being able to prevent the residents from having to continually be paying new taxes to, to, to pay for growth. So, anyway, uh, so I'm not gonna make that motion unless there's anybody here tonight that wants to chair that. I'll go ahead and make that motion, but...
I don't have one minute.
Nobody's jumping up, but anyway, thank you. So, um, and the last thing I thought I'd mention, I have a, I have a constituent that's a very detailed person, and they called me and, and said, are you aware that, that the, uh, new public safety tax goes into effect July first, and the community service fee does not go away till September first? And I said, I had not thought about that, uh, I thought they were concurrent. And anyway, uh, they were asking me, they were trying to verify their facts, and I said, I'll have to look at it. I have seen the ordinance that we did, and it is hardcoded for September first as far as the community service going away. But I'm not sure about the other one. Is the other one gonna go into effect July first?
It is gonna go into effect July first, but we don't receive any money from that until September. So, that's why that decision was made like that. We talked about it on the council floor, the council actually passed that ordinance.
I remember, I don't remember the discussion, though, so...
Well, I think you abstained, uh, and left the room, so.
Really?
I believe so, yes, sir.
I don't think I did.
Okay, alright.
That was something else.
Well, okay, alright, that may have been.
Anyway, I missed that.
But the, the, the discussion came, we, like, the tax gets collected in July, but we will not see any proceeds from that until the month of September.
Yeah, it would still be the same assets, because it would be, I guess, we bill in advance for the community service fee, but we get the revenue from the tax a month later, or something like that. So, there's a timing difference.
There is a timing difference, but we work on a fiscal year. So, as of two thousand and eighteen, we will, we will only received our funds through October from the sales tax revenue. So, budget-wise, that's the only way it was gonna work out, you know? And we are not billing for September, we're in June, we're only bill for July and August.
Yeah, two months.
Two months, yeah, yeah. So, we're not gonna double bill if, in my mind, we're not gonna double bill, I will say that. Uh, because we're collecting our sales, I mean, our, um, community service fee for the months in advance, but then we're gonna start in September, and then we're not collecting, because that's when the sales tax check will come to the City of Marmell. So, in my mind, we get a citizen's check in July, a citizen's check in August, and then the state's check in September.
Okay, does, does everybody else remember this conversation?
I do.
Okay, alright, well, then it was discussed, then, so I, I just didn't remember that, so, okay.
Yeah, and that, I mean, and I thought I'd, I tried to make that very clear, especially in the town hall meetings also, is that this is what was gonna happen.
There would be an overlap.
There would be an overlap, yeah. Because, like I say, just because it's being collected doesn't mean we receive that check.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Scott?
We talked a little bit about reforming an annexation committee, um, and I'm not volunteering for that. I'm act, I am actually volunteering someone else, Councilmember Vapurzian, to chair that, because I know that that's a passion of his, and I was wondering, uh, how we go about doing that.
Well, I guess we technically have a annexation committee. So, let me see who's on that. I'm sure the people that are on it are... I know that, uh, Councilmember Hoag would have been the one that was on it. Uh, I don't remember who else was on it. Anderson, so Anderson would still be on it. So, it might be that all we need to do is replace Councilmember Hoag with Councilmember Vapurzian, and then there, there are other department heads, there are citizens that are on that committee that's current. Now, we may look at it, some of them may not wanna be on that committee anymore, so we may have to make some other appointees. But I can have that information at the June fourth meeting, and, uh, who's currently on it, and, uh...
We have not gone without meetings, trust me.
Okay.
We have, we have had multiple discussions, so. But I am more than happy. I am excited. This is the face of excitement.
Alright, I, I... Okay, I will, if it's okay with the council, I will, I will put Councilmember Vapurzian on that committee, and then, uh, we'll see who else is, needs to be replaced on that committee.
If we need another one, I, I'll...
Okay, alright. And there's no, even if you're not on the committee, remember, you can always attend any meeting that you want to, so, uh, yeah. And you're welcome to speak. I'm sure if the chairman will let you, so.
Everybody come.
Okay, alright.
And pass out gadgets and trinkets.
Can you?
That's right. Well, I've been doing this for two years now.
So, how will we know when the meetings are?
We will make those public.
Yeah, we, we have to make them public.
Yes.
Since it's formalized.
They've been having them.
Well, I'm the only, uh, council member that's...
They haven't been having annexation committee meetings. He may be meeting with citizens, but he's not having annexation committee meetings.
We're just having discussions about possibilities.
Are there any other, uh, council members' comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay, City Clerk comments, uh, she gave me some to make for her, so, uh, Ms. Timmons wanted everybody to be aware that, uh, in your city and town that you should have gotten, uh, this one that shows a, an aquatic center on it from Batesville, uh, back on page, uh, forty-five, it says the ACCRTA meets in Marmell, and that's the Arkansas City Clerks, Recorders, and Treasurers Association. So, there's a picture at the top of them inside the center at the lake, so if you haven't seen that yet, so...
When should those have come? Are they...
Uh, they should have come in May, so...
They're coming to our, uh, our, oh, I got mine at, at home, I think, yeah.
Okay.
I'm in there.
Yep, she's in there, yeah, so, uh...
The dates for the...
They may not have you, they might not have you corrected yet.
I don't remember getting it.
Okay, alright, it should, I, I think we got them about a week ago, I think. Now, I'm guessing at that, but yeah. Okay, alright, okay, alright. Get with Tina when she gets back and tell her you need to get added to the list, so. It comes from the Municipal League is where it comes from. And then, uh, also, speaking of that, everyone should have received a confirmation email from the Arkansas Municipal League if you've indicated to Tina that you wanted to attend the conference in June. Uh, so that's coming up, June the twelfth through the fifteenth, or whatever. You did not receive one?
I did.
I'm talking with Tina, and she knows, um, um...
Well...
She said she has the confirmations, is what she told me.
Well, she told me to say everybody should have received their own confirmation by email, so...
I haven't gotten anything.
Okay, then check with Tina, but, uh, that's all I'm gonna say, 'cause I, I don't, I get mine, and I get confirmation that I've been registered, but that's the one I get, so. So, when she gets back on Monday, please check with her.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, you're right, Tuesday, yeah. Uh, 'cause we will be at the Memorial Day event on Monday. Alright, um, and then that's, uh, if you look under the FYI's, though, there's a lot of stuff happening. There's vacancies for the Tree Board, Facilities Board, and the Rock Region Metro Board. And then, there's, uh, uh, just says city offices closed. They're closed on Monday, Memorial Day, so. Just so you know what day they're gonna be closed, so, yeah. Alright, if there be no other business to come before the council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
They've got that in here, so, yeah. Alright, if there, uh, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting is adjourned. There be no other comments? Jess? Two jokes in a row? Someone spike your...
There've been a couple of those over the years.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, so you won't miss a meeting, but you're just letting us know you're gonna...